Ben, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I will call to order the June 2020 meeting of the Oxford, City of Oxford Planning Commission. Commissioners, you have your agenda in front of you. We've been blessed with some light agendas as of late, but if you would, please take your time and review it. Ask that if anybody has any changes or revisions to be made to the agenda, please let me know. Otherwise, I'll ask Commissioner Freeman if he would like to provide me with a motion on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the June agenda.
All right, I have a motion to approve. Commissioner Gray, do you have a second?
You're on mute.
I second.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. Commissioner Rigby, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner King, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Is Commissioner Riddell online yet? All right. Commissioner Murphy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay. The agenda is passed. The minutes of the May meeting. If you've had time to review those, any changes or revisions to be made for the May 11th meeting minutes? Hearing none, I'll ask Commissioner Freeman if he would provide me with a motion on the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I have moved approval of the minutes from the May 11th, 2020 meeting.
Is there a second, Commissioner Gray?
Yes, I second.
Okay. There's a second. Commissioner Rigby, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner King, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy, how do you vote?
Yes.
Once again, Ben, will you let me know when Judy gets on?
You bet. I'm trying to work with her to get her on right now, too.
Okay. That's fine. The minutes passed. The minutes for approval of the 511 meeting are approved. If you will notice, commission, you had one administrative approval, which was a grading plan in relation to Auntie Calcutt and Oxford Way on Formview Drive. Otherwise, we have a three-part consent agenda. The first portion of the first case on the consent agenda is case number 2626. It's Nichols Smith. It's site plan approval for the 2200 South Lamar Restaurant property located at 2200 South Lamar Boulevard. Is anyone at this meeting that wishes to speak or has an objection on the request for site plan approval for 2200 South Lamar Restaurant? All right. I assume that was not an objection. The other hearing is 2628. It's Lachlan, Ms. Shamble. It's a request for preliminary and final plan approval for Crossroads Animal Hospital subdivision, property located at 466 Highway 6 West. It's always combined with a case 2629, which is a request for site plan approval for the Crossroads Animal Hospital building expansion, same location, 466 Highway 6 West. Anyone here online wishes to voice an objection to either case number 2628 or 2629? Hearing no objection, I will entertain a motion on the consent agenda. Commissioner Freeman, do you have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have moved approval of all three items on the consent agenda.
Commissioner Gray, do you have a second?
Yes, I second.
All right. Commissioner Rigby, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner King, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, Judy Riddell is on the phone.
All right. Commissioner Riddell, we have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. How do you vote?
Yes.
All right, I vote yes as well. The consent agenda passes unanimously. Just to our first case for public hearing, which is case number 2627. It is Oxford Farms LLC, the final plat approval for Oxford Farms Phase 5, property located at 2610 Altamore Boulevard. Ben?
You bet. In October 2016, the subject properties were approved for a preliminary and final subdivision plat called Oxford Farms Phase 5. This plat was never filed in the Office of the Chancery Clerk of Lafayette County. However, whether it was filed or not, with the Chancery Clerk, the approval action by the Maron Board of Alderman makes this subdivision official. However, the applicant is proposing an amendment to the subdivision. Specifically, the modification relates to Lot 3, and it will enlarge that lot to a total of two, it will be two acres, so that's about a half an acre larger than it was previously approved. Lots 1 and 2 will remain unchanged. Since Lot 3 is undeveloped and it will, it will be subject to the traditional neighborhood business standards, however, lots 1 and 2 are developed with the professional office buildings that were constructed under that previous zoning of professional business. Engineering did provide comments related to access, water, sewer and utilities, and also stormwater detention, and those can be found in the staff report. Staff recommends approval of the proposed final amendment with the following conditions: Approval of the final plat for Oxford Farms Phase 5 by the Maron Board of Alderman. And condition number two is revise the stormwater management facility notes on the plat to say the following: Stormwater management requirement shall be met with a lot specific stormwater management facility. Each lot owner is responsible for providing and maintaining adequate stormwater facilities compliant with the City of Oxford stormwater ordinance.
Thank you, Ben. Any, who, who's here representing the applicant?
Joey Moore.
Joey Moore, Williams Engineering.
Hey, Joey, thanks for coming. Any questions for Joey? All right. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on the request related to Oxford Farms on case number 2627. Commissioner Freeman, do you have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have moved approval of item 2627 with the two staff conditions as noted.
All right, I have a motion to approve with the staff conditions as noted. Commissioner Gray, do you have a second?
Yes, I second.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Rigby, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Commissioner Riddell?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Case number 2627 passes. Second case for public hearing is MFM Development LLC, it's a request for preliminary and final plat approval for the Colonnade Crossing subdivisions. A property is located north of Highway 30, east, east of White Oak Lane and west of Mississippi Highway 7. Ben?
You bet. The subject property is located on the north side of Highway 30, it's west of Highway 7, and it measures approximately 88 acres. The zoning for the property is split with approximately the front third of it being zoned traditional neighborhood business. The remaining two-thirds is zoned suburban corridor. The applicant is requesting a preliminary plat approval for all phases of the subdivision which does consist of a total of 22 lots, and a final plat approval for Phase 1. You know, the remaining phases are not requesting final plat at this time. Phase 1 consists of three of the 22 lots, common open spaces A and B, and a portion of Barrington Drive. Subsequent phases will request the final plat approval in the future. The lots proposed in this development sufficiently meet the standards of, for the T and B in the suburban corridor zoning districts. At this time, staff has not received any proposals for site plans on any of the lots in this subdivision, including Phase 1. The applicant provided a tree survey using a sample inventory after consultation with the staff. There will be significant grading work performed with this subdivision approval, which will also result in the removal of some trees. However, several lots are planned to remain untouched, and those trees that remain on that site will offset that tree mitigation calculations. In the future, development proposals will be required to mitigate any trees from those areas according to the tree mitigation requirements of the Land Development Code. Other departments have reviewed this and have recommended approval. Engineering did provide comments related to the subdivision, subdivision proposal on water and sewer, streets, stormwater management, and then they also did note some changes to the construction plans. Staff has provided comments to the engineer for changes to the construction plans regarding water, sewer, storm drain, et cetera. At the time of this report, staff has not received a written response to those comments. However, staff has reviewed and discussed these changes in depth with the engineer and anticipates approval of a resubmital prior to the planning commission meeting for most comments. However, items requiring input from other state agencies may take longer, particularly considering the impact of COVID-19 on all workforces. Staff requests the authority to authorize and approve changes to the construction plans. The most significant change anticipated is the sizing of a pipe crossing under the central north-south roadway, which may be changed from a 42-inch pipe to a 72-inch pipe or two runs of 42-inch pipe. Pending a resubmital, the plans will also show some change in the horizontal alignment of the central north-south roadway in order to accommodate a super elevated roadway rather than the nearly 90-degree curve originally shown. Staff recommends approval of the proposal for the preliminary plat for the entire Colonnade Crossing subdivision and final plat for Phase 1 with the following conditions: Approval of the preliminary and final plat for Phase 1 of the Colonnade Crossing subdivision by the Maron Board of Alderman. Number two, staff has the authority to approve changes to the construction plans regarding infrastructure, including the roadway alignment. Number three, approval is contingent on approval by the city staff, the Mississippi Department of Health and the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality for all infrastructure, including water, sewer and stormwater management pond matters. Number four, prior to the case being heard by the Board of Alderman, a bond will be provided for all public infrastructure in any phase seeking final plat. Number five, prior to the case being heard by the Maron Board of Alderman, stormwater management plan must be approved by staff, and appropriate language must be provided on the plat. And number six, prior to the installation of any water or sewer infrastructure, final plans must be approved by the city, the Mississippi Department of Health and Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality. Additionally, I sent to you, the commissioners, a letter that we received from Linda Scott. I believe you all have all received that. And otherwise, we're happy to answer any questions. And do you know that Rianna's on the line as well? Should you have any specific questions for her?
Thank you, Ben. That letter is part of the record, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for staff? All right, hearing none. Who's representing the applicant?
I am John Grandberry.
Hey, John, thanks for coming. Any, any questions for John? All right, there is a question. Who?
I'm sorry, it was Bill Freeman.
Okay, Bill.
It's a minor question, John. It's really on, I was looking at the utility plan south, which is sheet 30 of number 48, and it's just a curiosity. There's no fire hydrant on that north side of Claremont, east of Ferndale, and it looks like on most of the other streets that there was a balance, kind of north and south on the fire hydrant, but I didn't see one on the north side there. And I-
So, north of, on the east side of Ferndale and north of-
On the north side of Claremont? Yes, sir.
Right, there, the fire hydrants are on the south side of Claremont, along Claremont Avenue, on the east side because of, because of that commercial development that we're anticipating for lot number seven. We anticipate that to take place before the larger lot, what is lot number 21, I believe, north of Claremont Avenue, which will-
Okay.
-have, which will have its internal, have its own internal looped water system.
Okay, great, thanks. I just figured there was a reason, I just didn't, couldn't understand it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And to clarify a couple things, gentlemen, I know that we have addressed the majority of those comments, the changes of alignment, all of the plans that you have in front of you and a part of this record have all been addressed. I believe that the report was made before we resubmitted the plans, just to let everybody know.
Thank you, John. Any additional questions for the commission? Any additional questions for the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I did have a question for Rianna.
Okay. Go ahead, Duncan.
Rianna, you there?
I am.
Okay. On y'all's part about the street, you said y'all may determine in the future that not all of the extensions are necessary, that it's not in the best interest of the city to set some of the areas shown as possible future right of way. What would be some of some things that, will you elaborate a little bit on that?
Yeah, so I think it's Claremont in particular that we're showing extensive east tile onto the area that's currently owned by the school district. So, it may be, and it goes, it would go right through the middle of a common open space. Well, it may be that if the grading is not such that a future connection would make sense in that area, we wouldn't want to accept a right of way that we're not ever going to use, and that would just be a burden to maintain. So, if it's not feasible for us to actually have a road built through there, then we wouldn't want to accept the right of way donation. And we're just, we're going to try to look at that a little bit more as we continue to move forward.
Okay. And then, right after that, there are a couple sentences talking about the impact of Oxford Elementary with classes and everything, you know, moving forward, the uncertainty of classes being at Oxford Elementary, is that a structural recommendation?
Well, it affects what the road will look like to some degree in that, right now, we know with elementary school there, we would allow them to have the three lanes of traffic, only because there's so much traffic in peak hours moving through there, and they have the security available to help manage traffic. But if it was an older school going there in the future, I don't think that we would necessarily allow the three lanes, so we'd have to look at it, just because the traffic patterns are a little different, I think. We'd have to look at it more, and certainly if it was a different type of development there, we wouldn't want those three lanes. So, that's what, we're just, we're trying to look at those, and we've asked MDOT to help us evaluate it, because it is a little, a little new to us, so.
Okay. All right, and then, and one more question for you, let me make sure I get the light paved. I think it was maybe page 46 with sidewalks.
Mm-hmm.
There was no sidewalk, like in front of Lot 1, everything else, you have a sidewalk running Highway 30, there's no reason for that.
John, I'm going to, let me-
Yeah, I'll, let me get there. You said sheet number, what, what we- It's 46. You got sidewalks all over the development, including running Highway 30 except for Lot 1.
It's sheet 38 or 48? Okay. If I'm, if I'm seeing that right, Duncan.
Well, it's 46 in my PDF, and it may be on 38 as well.
Or 37 or 48, yeah.
Okay, is it the, are you looking at the coverage area plan?
No, John, it's not the end of the plan.
Yeah, the color, the teal turquoise? Yes, sir, yes, I am. That's actually, it was, it's just not highlighted on that sheet because it is off of, that section of sidewalk is actually on the city right of way. There is an actual sidewalk along sheet, along Lot 1. It's just not that colored because it's not part of the coverage on our property, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so there is a sidewalk right there.
There is, correct.
All right.
All right. Any additional questions for John or staff? Anyone online tonight who wishes to voice an objection to the request?
And if you're on the phone, star 67 will unmute you.
Okay. I think we've given adequate time. Having no additional questions and hearing no one voice an objection, we do have a correspondence from Linda Scott, which is contained within the record. Understanding the request made, Commissioner Freeman, is there a motion to be made with regard to case number 2630?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of case number 2630 with the staff recommendation.
Thank you. Commissioner Gray, is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
All right. Commissioner Rigby, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner King, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Commissioner Riddell?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Excuse me. It passes unanimously. Which brings us now to case number 2631. It's another request for preliminary and final plat approval for Cedar Bend subdivision located at 910 Old Taylor Road. Ben?
As indicated in the case history above, the applicant, or this applicant and this property has been before this commission on many occasions dating as far back as April 2017. Initially, the property was split into two phases, and a preliminary plat was approved, creating four lots in Phase 1 and four lots in Phase 2. A final plat was later approved for Phase 1. The applicant later proposed a new preliminary plat, which was case 2387 for Phase 2, which would have created a single lot that would facilitate a common interest, common interest development. That was approved by the planning commission, but it never proceeded to the Mayor and Board of Alderman for approval. More recently, the same applicant requested a special exception for a common interest development, which is case 2471, a requirement for a property located within a historic preservation district. At the March 11, 2019 meeting, the, that request was denied by the commission, and subsequently, the original preliminary plat for Phase 2 expired in May of 2019 after 18 months had surpassed. The applicant is now requesting a preliminary and final plat for Cedar Bend Phase 2. The proposal indicates a total of five lots, four taking access from South 9th Street and one from Cleveland Street. In the traditional suburban residential zoning district, lots are required to be a minimum of 7,200 square feet, and the five proposed lots exceed that requirement. And it's actually 7,500 square feet, but they still, they still exceed that requirement. Additionally, the five lots comply with the lot width and the street frontage requirements for the district. Engineering did provide comments related to access, sidewalks, water and sewer and utilities, and stormwater management. And staff recommends approval of the proposed preliminary and final plat with the following conditions. Prior to the case being heard by the Mayor and Board of Alderman, a copy of the covenant shall be provided to the City of Oxford Planning Department. Number two, approval of the preliminary and final plat for Cedar Bend Phase 2 subdivision by the Mayor and Board of Alderman. Number three, approval of construction plans for water, sewer, sidewalk, and stormwater conveyance. And number four, prior to the issuance of any permits for a lot, it shall be demonstrated that runoff from a lot for all storm events can be conveyed to the stormwater management facility, and all necessary drainage easements for conveyance across adjacent lots have been executed.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions for the, from the commissioners to the staff?
Mr. Chairman, I just got one quick question, or it may not be, it may be the engineer's all right.
Okay. Who is representing the applicant?
Paul Cuscinino.
Hey, Paul, thanks for, thanks for coming. Gray, Duncan, do you have a question for Paul?
Yes, well, what kind of, these kind of the construction staging for these lots, are they constructed coming in on a structural location via, or maybe no, no, no deposit?
No, I mean, the intent here is for these to act as typical single-family lots that would each have their own individual drive, driveway access. And I guess there's some potential that, you know, you may have adjacent lot owners that communicate with each other and coordinate, you know, an individual drive or a drive that would actually be shared by two lots, but that's not the intent as we sit here now. I think that the intent is for those to have individual drives, just like all the other homes in the neighborhood.
Yes, for construction purposes though as well, they would, I guess that was my question, just the traffic in and out of each lot.
Yeah, and if you were asking about construction, I didn't hear that part of the question, but yes, but I mean, I think that would be the same thing for construction, just like there's, you know, family lot, there would access off one, you know, one individual drive for each lot.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Joseph here, quick, quick question.
Go ahead, Joseph.
This is, this is actually just for staff and I, probably oversight, but I'm not sure how strict this language will be, but on the staff recommendations, number four, it says requires, requires them to demonstrate runoff from a lot for all storm events? Is that what they meant to say, or is there, is that going to be defined later? Because for all storm events, that's, that's pretty broad. I don't know if they can, I don't know that they can meet that. Do we need to restrict that a little bit? Staff, do you want to clarify?
Um, the intent is for all storm events required in the stormwater ordinance. So, y'all can feel free to clarify that as needed, but it is for the, for the storms that they require to drain.
I assume that, I just wanted to, like I said, I don't know how strict we are on that language, but anyway, that's all I got. It's quite a valid point, this is Paul Cuscinino. I really did not stand out to me, but I think it is a valid point. I think I understood the intent, and I assumed that Rianna meant for the storm events as defined in Land Development Code, but for the sake of clarity, if there is a motion to approve, I would appreciate if someone could add that specific language, that it's, you know, specific to the storm events that are in the Land Development Code.
Paul, this is Marvin. Engineering noted that there's no sidewalks along the subdivision's frontage with South 9th or Cleveland Avenue. Are there plans to put sidewalks in?
We have not intended to do that. There's some concern about the grading that would need to be done for installation of those sidewalks, that would damage trees along the roadway and along the, just outside of the public right of way on the, on the frontage of those lots. So, we've actually had quite a few conversations with city staff and even with Janet Fattinow, who is the Alder Woman for this area, and I think the, our understanding of their desire was to not, the city's desire was to not see sidewalks there.
So, to be clear, engineering does not, engineering has not signed off on that. We would have noted, if we had, we noted that there are not sidewalks on the plan. We have heard the same conversations that Paul is speaking of, the same concerns expressed, and understand that the neighborhood may have some concerns, and Dr. Ance now as the representative, as Alderman, has expressed some concerns, but that, that's just something that engineering, we are noting it and kind of stepping to the side.
Okay, can I ask a question?
Yes.
All right, this is Judy. So, I don't understand where we stand on sidewalks, I guess is what I'm saying. And it seems like that's something that should be clear in this. I thought that we basically required sidewalks for anything like this. I understand if there's a reason in some particular instance that it cannot happen if there's a physical, you know, barrier to it on the property, but I would think that would be something that would need to be worked out before, you know, that was spelled out in there.
And that was my understanding as well.
You are correct that sidewalks are a requirement. It was, we have not seen, updated set of construction plans. There were construction plans that were submitted back when the plat first went through, but as this was moving along to make this agenda, we had not seen any plans, but we have been, we had a, we were informed that this, that the sidewalks, there was lots of conversations going on about those sidewalks, so.
And Marvin and Judy, just, just to remind you that the planning commission in this instance for preliminary plat is a, is a recommending body, and so, you know, should, you know, should it be the commission's desire to emphasize that sidewalks be, be added, you know, you could make that recommendation as part of, as part of your motion, whatever it may be, for consideration by the Mayor and Board of Alderman.
Thanks, Ben. Any more?
Well, can I ask one more thing about the sidewalk system general? So, cannot have a sidewalk if we do basically require that all new construction has sidewalks, but cannot have a sidewalk, that doesn't require any sort of variance or anything. It's just saying we can't put one, so we're not going to.
Sorry, took me a minute to unmute. Judy, I have always believed that not having sidewalks addressed required a variance. We've, but this is a plat, and so, I'm going to, I think Ben had more of these conversations about the sidewalk, I'm not sure, but he may have more information to share, or perhaps Paul, I don't know.
Well, yeah, I guess I'll say that I, there's been a few weeks here, I assume we could have worked out some agreement on this, as whether they really had to be installed or not. I mean, I think, I don't want to speak for my client, they're on the call, I think, so they may want to chime in, but, you know, I assume they're willing to discuss this further. Honestly, the lack of sidewalks on these simple plans here was what we thought was the desire from the powers that be of the city. And there was never any discussion about that requiring a variant. Otherwise, we would have applied for one.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Let me ask you this, Rianna, and, or Ben, is this, if we make a motion as is, can it be, meaning we change and approve the plat and it doesn't have a sidewalk, and things come down the pipe, and there's some discussion between the city and the city leaders and the applicant, and sidewalks are then agreed upon, is that something that has come before us? Can it just be done?
Hey, Brian, I can, I think I can simplify this. I'm just communicating with our client. They're, they're good with installing sidewalks, but we will-
Okay, well, I mean, I don't want to require anything, and I guess, if they're good with doing it, I guess we can just allow the city to eliminate it if they wish. The city leaders, and that conversation can continue.
Right.
Okay, all right. Understanding that, any more discussion? Any more questions? Is anyone on the call tonight who wants to voice any type of objection to the application? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on case number 2631. Commissioner Freeman, do you have a motion?
Yes, sir. I would recommend approval of item 2631 with the four items shown by the staff, the conditions with the one amendment on item number four, which is all storm events, we would add the phrase as required by the Land Development Code. And then further, I would add a fifth condition that sidewalks would be added based on the approval of the city engineering staff.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Gray, do you have a second?
Sorry, yes, the second.
Thank you. Commissioner Wigby, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Commissioner Riddell?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Case number two-six-three-one is approved. Thank you, Paul, thank you. Our last item on the agenda is Public Candy case number two-six-three-two, it's Heritage Developments LLC. It's a request for a final plat approval for the Evergreen subdivision Phase Two, its property located at Dillon Avenue. Ben?
Yes, sir. This property was recently annexed into the city limits of Oxford, but it has been before the commission for final plat approval, case twenty-three-ninety-three, to create a two-lot subdivision, which was approved in November of eighteen. A site plan for Burns First United Methodist Church was approved for Lot Three, and no development has been proposed on Lot Four. When city staff was performing final construction inspections for the Burns First United Methodist Church, it was discovered that the stormwater detention and the access drive were changed. As a result, the applicant is requesting an amendment to the subdivision to include common space that incorporates the detention pond, and to indicate the access drive and the location that it was, that it was constructed. Engineering did provide comments, and, and I will read those into the record. The proposed plat amendment changes the location and ownership of the area originally dedicated for an access drive and a detention pond to serve the Burns United Methodist Church. These changes are necessary based on changes to the approved construction plans made in the field without staff approval. Specifically, the pond and driveway locations were changed, and the pond is now shown to be a common open space with some ownership and maintenance responsibilities by Lot Three and Lot Four. Staff has expressed concerns regarding the language and ownership mechanisms necessary to ensure that the church retains the volume for current and future stormwater needs, and it is clear that Lot Four will only receive a small benefit of use from the pond due to its size. Staff also has concerns that the pond area could be abandoned and allowed to be sold for taxes in the future without clear language on the plat and deeds. The language shown is an attempt to address these concerns and is under review. Cross-access easements are required to ensure that Lot Three has used that drive that will serve Lot Four. This drive will be a private driveway and owned and maintained by Lot Four. Staff has noted to the engineer that this lot configuration does not provide a second access to a public street, as currently shown. There are no, there are no concerns on the engineer's part regarding any impact on future development of Lot Four. Lots Three and Four take access from an extension of Dillon Avenue. The city has not yet inspected or accepted ownership of the extension of Dillon Avenue, and bonds must remain in place until the roadway is accepted by the Board of Alderman. The bond for the extension of the roadway was previously provided with the approval of Evergreen's Phase One. Staff recommends approval of the proposed plat amendment with the following conditions: Number one, approval of the final plat for Evergreen's Phase Two by the Maron Board of Alderman; number two, prior to the case being heard by the Maron Board of Alderman, satisfactory language must be provided regarding ownership and maintenance responsibilities for the common open space area being used as a stormwater management facility; and three, bonds are required for all public infrastructure until the city accepts the extension of Dillon Avenue.
Thank you, Ben.
You bet.
Any questions from the commission for staff? All right.
Yeah, wait, I just don't want to interrupt anybody. Joseph-
Go ahead.
Murphy. Satisfactory language must be provided. Who determines that it's satisfactory, and who is that going to be provided to? I guess the staff, but, can I get the specificity on that?
Hey, y'all, this is Paul Cuscinino. It's usually me and Rihanna when we get into stuff like that.
That was my question, perfect. That's all I need to know.
All right. Paul, I assume you're still here on that?
Yes.
Okay. Any question for Paul? All right, hearing none, is anyone here who wishes to object to the request for final plat approval? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on case number two-six-three-two. Commissioner Freeman, do you have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of item twenty-six-thirty-two, subject to the three conditions as noted by staff, with the further clarification on item number two, that that would be provided to the city engineering and legal staff.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gray, do you have a second?
Yes, I'll second.
All right. Commissioner Wigby, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Riddell?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes. Yes.
I vote yes as well. It is passed, case number two-six-three-two is passed unanimously. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, guys.
That, ladies and gentlemen, is the last of our agenda. Is there anything additional, Ben?
Not at this time.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Freeman, do you have such a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I believe that we adjourn.
Commissioner Gray, is there a second?
There is a second.
All right. Commissioner Wigby, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Riddell?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes. Yes.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.